I'd like to call to order the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners, Commissioners Workshop Meeting for Wednesday, October twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty five. We'll begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invincible, liberty and justice for all.
We have minutes before us for review that we will take action on next week. If there are no questions, we'll move forward to executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Haggerty.
On Friday, October twenty fourth, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding the purchase or lease of real property. On Tuesday, October twenty eighth, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding personnel matters, economic development grants, bond financing, and the purchase or lease of real property.
Any questions of Mr. Haggerty? Hearing none, we'll move on to public participation on agenda items only. Just for clarity, this is a three-minute cap. We are being livestreamed and it is for matters of public participation on agenda items only. Anyone for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to directors and guests not listed on our agenda today. Sorry about that. We do have our reach in and reach out, a to reach out initiative here. Judge Royce Morris is with us and Tenessa Moten, come on up. We're going to hear from them about this initiative and excited to have them with us this morning.
All rise.
Well, good morning and thank you for the opportunity to address this very important initiative. When I thought about addressing you this morning, what I thought about was the fact that I have five foster brothers. A lot of people don't know that about me. When my oldest sister went to college, my mother, who was a great mother, realized that she was a great mother. So she decided to take in young men and help those young men as a foster mother. This initiative is to get our community engaged, to make sure we keep our kids in Dolphin County. We have kids who are abused and neglected and our agency does a great job. This is one of the most important things we do in this county is protect those kids that are abused and neglected. So it's very important to us and so we want to reach out to the community and that's what this initiative is about. And Tenessa, she's the brains behind this operation. She put together a very good program. I want to thank the commissioners for signing on for this and agreeing to assist with this. And we think that we're going to reach out to the community and we're going to affect the lives of children in the future. Tenessa, tell them about the initiative.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
So the initiative, it is a four-part collaborative initiative where we are working alongside four local churches. That would be Goodwin Memorial Baptist Church, The Rock Church, Greater Zion Baptist Church, and Wesley Union AME Zion Church. Through the four-part initiative, there are four different events. The first one is on November the thirteenth from six to eight P M. And that is a meet and greet and that's a time for the community to come out and meet the key players or key figures of the child welfare system to engage in conversation with them, to learn what their roles are particularly when it comes to the child welfare system. And then on December the eleventh, again from six to eight P M at The Rock Church, we will have what's called an informational. During that time, the community will be educated on the processes of the foster care and adoption. They will also be provided with different resources to include personal testimonials from journeyers through the child welfare system, even if that was from childhood up to adulthood, foster parent, or one who adopted, they will provide it with that information as well. Then on March the twelfth from six to eight P M at Greater Zion, we will have a panel discussion, a very diverse panel of individuals who themselves have different lenses and areas of expertise, particularly when it comes to the foster care and adoption processes. Again, maybe there is someone who journeyed through as a child. Maybe there is someone who participated in kinship care, foster parent or adopted someone. But it is another way, a different type of way to educate the community on kinship, foster care and adoption. And then we conclude our initiative on April the twelfth from one to three P M at Wesley AME Zion Church with the Resource Fair. So anyone who wasn't able to come to any of the prior events, they will be provided with opportunities, great opportunities to receive a wealth of information from different resources, different supports in the areas, again pertaining to, excuse me, foster care, adoption and kinship. And so, again, we collaborated with these four local churches, designed a very strategic initiative to ultimately educate our community in a very different type of way on these four different areas. And so that is the basis for the initiative and we're very excited for it, especially too, because November is National Adoption Month and so this is one way that CYS will be promoting awareness to that.
And we just want to thank Kim Dibler and Stacy Gillespie for supporting the initiative as well as the commissioners. And we know that this will be a great initiative and our hope is to draw people in. We want them to see the inside of what's going on and, you know, the good, the bad and the ugly, but with the, with the thought that we'll get more people assisting and running alongside of us. And we invite everyone here and the commissioners to these initiatives so the community can see you as well.
That's great. Commissioner Hartwick.
First of all, thank you for presenting today. Over the years, we've talked about so much of trying to gain both trust and take existing resources and programs and being able to ensure that we've got partnerships. We want to make sure that it's very clear that the last thing and the last resort that Dolphin County wants to do is to take your children. We really would like to figure out ways to support parents and find ways to be able to support families in ensuring the safety of our children. Obviously, in cases that we don't have many options, but as we build community support, this is without community support, without the faith-based community, without community partners, without a community that cares. And one of the things I will say, we have a lot of arguments in our society, right? We argue and it seems like everybody's just joining, but the one thing we come together around is the best interest of our children, right? When we create a platform that talks about how do we put hands and hearts into being able to see our kids have the best opportunity for start, I see, Ralph, I agree, is I see so many people that have dedicated their lives to try to give kids that best start. I think we start from that common denominator and in this case, opening ourselves up, figuring out ways for folks to get to make personal contacts inside the agency. So we're just not a name that people are calling. And then ultimately looking to the community for help and solutions. You know, the first thing to say is we need help. We have adoptions, I see placement rates moving in the right direction. I know we've got serious cases still on the horizon, but what, how great is it? We've got needs for foster parents. So anybody looking, we have needs for foster parents. A part of this is to be engaging individuals like Judge Morris, who's had an experience and a personal experience of how that's benefited individuals in it, inside his household. And to share that same experience with another child who, not through the fault of their own, are in a similar situation and figuring out a way to provide both resources, hearts, and a sense of trust in our agency than rather than saying, let's shield this from these concerns from, you know, an agency that's going to be taking your kids. Let's figure out a way to open ourselves up and have the level of support and relationship and trust that we may be able to get the help that we need. Because I will tell you, there's no handbook to being a father. There's no handbook to being a mother and, you know, there's, the world is struggling in many ways and trying to figure out ways to provide that kind of support, guidance and assistance to families as they raise children is, is an essential component to what we do to see a healthier community. So I want to thank you for the initiative and the effort, the ability for us to look internally, both to find resources that are connected to the community in our agencies, but also to look to the community for help and support because when we get everybody bought in to the best interest and safety of our kids, only then will we see the safety of our kids actually prevail. So thank you for your initiative and your effort and hard work.
Commissioner Priest?
Yes, thank you. I look forward to attending one or more of those events. In fact, I think at least one is already on my schedule, November fourteen, thirteenth one. I want to start off by thanking Commissioner Hartwick for his oversight in this area for over two decades and the work that he accomplished, working with the directors and the courts gets us to today. The children are our future and lives are being saved by your actions. And by proxy, other lives are being saved. People are, the betterment of our society is increasing as a result of what you're doing here. And we can't thank you enough and Judge, you have a lot of accomplishments to date and I feel that this is one of your greatest accomplishments. What you're doing in the community, what you're doing for the children cannot be talked about enough. And here you are today, coming with another initiative, you and your team. And it just goes to show that your heart's in the right place. You've lived it and until you've lived it, you don't really know it. You've lived it, you know what these folks are going through. So having you engaged here on our behalf is, is a true blessing to all two hundred and ninety-three thousand residents in the county. Thank you.
Thank you both for coming and sharing with us and for the hard work you've put behind this initiative. We're excited to see it roll out over four events and to see the impact that those events are going to have. Certainly, I know we've been invited to all four. I'm sure we'll, I, I know I have at least one or more on my schedule as well. And so we look forward to participating and certainly if there's anything we can be doing through an online presence, through our Facebook page or things like that, please reach out to the Chief Clerk's Office to ensure that we get stuff posted on, on, online to make sure that people are invited and the community is aware, anything we can do to raise awareness. Thank you for your efforts in this. Thanks to our Children and Youth Program as well for all their efforts and so, thanks for being here. Anything else, any final words or any final things we should know?
No, thank you. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Judge.
Thanks, Judge. Thanks, Tenessa.
Thank you to Kim and Stacy and Randy.
This time we'll move forward to Salary Board, Cassie Ruschinsky.
Morning.
Good morning.
There's no Salary Board Packet this week and no items need voted on for the Personnel Packet today.
Okay, any questions of Cassie? Hearing none?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to take a moment while you're still here. As I look at the personnel transactions, I couldn't help but notice item number thirty-two, which was the retirement last Friday of Andrea Kepler. She's the M H A D P Administrator. What a wonderful job she did here at the county. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Hartwick if he could just to expound upon his feelings of the work that she accomplished while she was here under the Human Services umbrella. And I mean, that's, she's, that, that's a, a big loss for us, big shoes to fill. But I know you had a lot of years of work with her and the successes to date within that agency are largely due in part to her leadership.
Thank you, Commissioner Priest. I try to keep it brief because to talk about Andrea would be quite lengthy, especially with her history. When I started here, she was actually on Advisory Board. At that point, was in charge of, a little bit later, of the Community Hospital Innovation Plan from, from the Harrisburg State Hospital into the community, went on to be the CEO of Wernersville State Hospital. And then later, as she was retired from the state in that role, was in New York City running homeless shelters during the pandemic. And in her continuous ways and energy of giving back, contacted her during that time period and asked, wouldn't it be great to be able to try to build at least somewhat of a foundation that was destroyed by the state closing the state hospital? And that system that was intended to be built out regardless of the lack of resources, let's give an effort to providing the best that we can in innovatively providing solutions from the county level and finding partnerships to be able to address the concerns. And a lot of great work was done. I know she's still looking forward to running New York City marathons, remaining in incredible shape. And I actually took her flowers Friday to thank her for, on her last day. And based upon the conversation, God's not done with her yet and she'll be involved at, at, in a heavy level of both opening her phone to whoever takes over the role, but continuing to be available and passionate about the level of support for access to behavioral health services, autism and developmental programs. She will be not far away and continue to advocate for that. That's who she is. So thank you to Andrea for years of great service. And by the way, she was elected as the Human Service Individual of the Year two years ago for our five peers across Pennsylvania and we were lucky to have her during the time that we did. Thank you.
I echo everything said by Commissioner Priest and Commissioner Hartwick. Thank you, Cassie. Move on to Director of Budget and Finance, Chris Davis.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
I only have one change to the purchase order packet for you, the first item listed. That change order has already been approved in the system because the department is no longer purchasing it. So it's just canceling out what was already approved, so you won't see it on next week's packet.
Any questions of Mr. Davis?
I just want to point out that in front of me here, I have three booklets, which are actually four booklets, which are going to be part of our public hearings on the upcoming two thousand and twenty-six budget. I want to thank you for putting that together. I know that took a lot of time. I want to thank our directors for going back and making adjustments. I haven't seen what they are yet, but as this board moves forward with some tough decisions we're going to have to make for two thousand and twenty-six, you have provided us with the information requested. So now it's up to us to have these meetings and then make some tough decisions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Chief Clerk's Report, Mr. Haggerty.
Good morning, commissioners. There are a handful of items on today's agenda for your consideration. We have an ordinance continuing the county's guarantee of an E D C loan originally taken out in two thousand and four, which is being refinanced, one District Attorney's Office Agreement, an agreement to lease the Schaffner Youth Center to life, and one Parks and Recreation Agreement, which I want to note should have been listed as being nine thousand dollars and is fully paid for with grant funding. So if you choose to make a motion to approve that, it will need to be reflective of nine thousand dollars, not the number listed. The Great American Outdoor Show item and Solid Waste Agreement with M X I Environmental Services, both remain in former business after being tabled last week. As Commissioner Priest just alluded to, we were, you know, going to be faced with some challenging budget discussions in the near future. And I do want to provide an update for the public, the board and our employees about the ongoing impacts of the state budget impasse and federal government shutdown. County governments across Pennsylvania are experiencing unprecedented impacts due to the simultaneous state budget impasse and federal government shutdown. These impacts, combined with additional budgetary challenges looming on the horizon for next year, have left Dolphin County with no choice but to take the difficult but necessary step of implementing a hiring freeze for certain departments that do not relate to public safety, prisoner safety, or the administration of free and fair elections. Additionally, as many folks know, the human services-related programs we provide here in Dolphin County specifically are almost entirely paid for with state and federal funds. These are the programs offered by our Area Agency on Aging, our Departments of Children and Youth Services, Drug and Alcohol Programs, and Mental Health, Autism and Developmental Programs. These services are absolutely essential and thousands of Dolphin County residents rely on them every day. Unfortunately, because both the state and federal governments have failed to pass budgets, our reserves of funding for these programs are projected to run out towards the end of November. Unless both the state and federal government resolve their budget impasses very soon, we will have no choice but to cease all payments to service providers in these fields. We will also have to take out loans of roughly one point five million dollars per month to avoid having to furlough the over two hundred and fifty dedicated public servants who work in these departments. These loans will likely cost county taxpayers over sixty thousand dollars per month in interest payments, depending on what interest rate we are ultimately able to secure. We've begun initial discussions in order to, to secure these loans and I expect to have something more formal to propose for the board's consideration in the next couple of weeks that will preserve these jobs while the impasses go on. We've been able to weather the storm for several months now, but our, our ability to continue to do so will soon come to an end and I wanted to be transparent and raise the alarm over this given that we are just weeks away from having to take these drastic steps. That concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Mr. Haggerty, thank you for your leadership on this and for, you know, assisting the board in a plan of action. Certainly, none of us want to be in this position and I think the state needs to find a way to get a budget passed so that we can make sure that these funds are accessible. But I'm thankful for the planning that you're doing to ensure that our employees, we have a path to ensure that employees are paid. Is there any other comments from, from the board on this matter or any comments related to the Chief Clerk's Report?
Just wanted to publicly thank Eric Haggerty for the amount of work that he's been putting, him, Vince Peats and administrative staff. The amount of time, effort and difficulty in attempting to try to pull together both, you know, providing information, but also the execution of the administrative roles and responsibilities of this job have been even increasing. And your ability to stay on top and try to guide that ship has been duly noted and this board is better off. So thank you for the administrative team continuing to keep this moving in the right direction.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Haggerty. Solicitor's Report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. All matters requiring board action have been reviewed and approved by the Solicitor's Office with the exception of item three, which is the N I C E contract, which I believe you're going to table. I'm not suggesting that you vote on all that at once as we did last week. That was my fault for not teeing that up appropriately, but I wanted to report that during my solicitor's comment. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Owens? Hearing none, we'll move forward to the Training Packet, which I don't believe I have a Training Packet. There is no Training Packet this week, so.
No Training.
Nothing to approve this week then for that. Matters requiring board action, we have five or four matters before us requiring board action. I'm going to request that number three be voted on separate. And whatever motion might be made for items one, two and four together need to include the adjustment to item one, if I'm correct, to nine thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt items one, two.
Okay.
And with the adjustment to nine thousand.
Great, so we have a, we have a motion for items one, two and four with the adjustments nine thousand.
I'll second that with the addendum of the nine thousand adjustment.
We have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have a?
I'll move to table item three.
We have a motion to table item number three. Do we have a second? All second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Moving to former business, we'll ma, we'll handle these matters one at a time. Item number one, do we have a motion?
So explain to me legally, you know, sort of how we need to move this from formal business to actionable business. Is it, you need to remove them from being tabled first and then, then, then they are actionable? Then vote correct.
I'll make a motion that we put under former business. Item number one, the agreement between Dolphin County and the NRA of America to provide security services to the two thousand and twenty-six Great American Outdoor Show from February first to February ninth. Hourly rates vary from thirty to fifty dollars per hour. I make a motion to put that on the table.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I, yeah, I just want to make sure that the individuals that are included in this contract are going to be CID and the Sheriff's Office. There is not going to be safety and security that are going to be a part of this contractual agreement. Am I correct?
Correct.
I think we have a head nod from the Director of Public Safety out there that that's correct.
Yep.
Just for clarity, this vote is just to put it on the table. We will then need a vote affirmative to, is it, is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries to put it on the table. We now have item one on the table. Is there a motion to approve item?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Moving on to item number two, do we have a motion to take it off the table?
I will move to take item two off the table.
Is there a second? I will second that motion. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of taking this item off the table? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A motion for the action on this now that it's on the table.
I would make a motion that we do not support the agreement between Dolphin County and M X I Environmental Services at this time.
Okay, so voting in the affirmative will be to vote down in this case.
Right.
For clarity, okay. We have a motion, do we have a second? I will second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion, in this case, the affirmatives are to vote down, item two. New business? We have none, Commissioner comments, Commissioner Hartwick?
Yeah, my comments will center around the SNAP situation in this county. And Dolphin County is closely monitoring the ongoing disruption affecting SNAP benefits while state and federal partners continue to be without a budget. The Board of Commissioners is taking immediate steps to support residents who are struggling to access food and other essential items. I want to thank our departments for immediately responding and attempting to try to come up and remedy, at least with a resource list, current existing resources. And we're, we directed, coordinated countywide effort to develop and publish a comprehensive county resource and guidance list. This guide will help residents quickly find assistance and clear reliable information. County departments leading this collaboration include the Area Agency on Aging, Children and Youth, Mental Health, Autism and Developmental Programs, Drug and Alcohol, Northern Dolphin Human Services Center, and Community and Economic Development. The public-facing guide will include at a minimum of emergency food access, location and hours for food pantries, distribution sites and meal programs, benefits navigation, clear guidance on reapplying for verifying benefits through Compass and the P A Department of Human Services, family and senior supports, information on WIC school meal programs and senior nutrition programs, essential items, a local organization providing diapers, hygiene products and other necessary supplies and transportation assistance. Our goal is to release an initial version of this guide promptly, an update it regularly as provider hours, inventories and programs and our current political situation change. Once finalized, the information will be shared on the county's website, social media channels and with community partners to ensure wide and rapid distribution. This is also critically important to be able to ensure that we are using existing resources while we are in this immediate crisis. So thank you to our staff, thank you to the leadership of the Chief Clerk and to Commissioner Priest, who is assisting in the oversight position of all of Health and Human Services. I know this is something that was critically important to him as well, so thank you.
Commissioner Priest?
Thank you. I have three things. First of all, I got to attend the Salvation Army's one hundred and fortieth anniversary celebration this week and I want to thank both my colleagues for either attending or supporting the proclamation that was presented. I was also joined by Ruby Dow from the county. It was a packed house, it was great to go through and tour that facility again. And the work they're doing within our communities here in Dolphin County is pretty remarkable. I want to thank them for the work they've done. I want to thank all of the department heads that are operating under my oversight for the work that they did, taking the initial budget and going back and making revisions, which we are going to go through here in the coming weeks. So thank them for the extra amount of work that each of them did for this process. And last but not least, I want to wish good luck to all the candidates statewide, countywide and within our municipalities for the November fourth general election, which the polls will be open from seven A M to eight P M, thirteen hours at our hundred and fifty-eight precincts and boards throughout Dolphin County. I want to thank Chris Bachman and his team at voter registration elections. I know they, they took into consideration from recommendations from last year during the mail-in process and we had parking issues. We had some elected officials from Sotera Township and elsewhere that gave us recommendations that they followed. We had no issues with parking this year. Obviously, some of that had to do with the fact that it wasn't a presidential election, but we're getting, we're getting better with the processes. Want to thank the twelve hundred volunteers who are giving it their time to work for us here throughout the county on Election Day and Election Night. Please go to dolphincounty.gov, that's dot G O V, starting at eight thirty. The mail-ins will come in at once, so you'll see a huge amount of mail-in totals at eight thirty and then beginning at nine P M, every half hour. and then beginning at 9:00 p.m., every half hour, as the results come in throughout the county, they will be posted. So, good luck to all the candidates, and I want to thank my fellow commissioners for the support of that office and the great work that they are doing.
Thank you, Commissioner Priest. I had the honor of speaking at the YWCA First Responders Breakfast in the past week. Certainly thankful for all of our first responders with a focus there on domestic violence and the reality of first responders often being the first called out into very dangerous situations, and the difficulty and certainly a somber tone and honoring reflecting on the three lives lost in York County. And it was a great breakfast by the YWCA honoring all their work in advocating for victims and the way in which they resource and support. Also, the 140th anniversary of the Salvation Army here in Harrisburg. As Commissioner Priest said, that was a great event and excited to support them. I also was at the Humblestown Halloween Parade, excited to be there with my kids, a few of which were in the parade, and having a good time. A great thing that Humblestown puts on, they do a great job putting that on. Just want to encourage everybody this coming week to have a happy and safe Halloween, and certainly go out and vote on November 4th. Correspondence will be handled by the Chief Clerk's Office and disseminated as needed. Public participation, I have two individuals signed up in advance, and then we will open it to the floor. Just a reminder, it is a three-minute cap. We are being livestreamed, and you'll need to say your name prior to your public comment. We'll begin with Pamela Parson. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Pamela Parson, City of Harrisburg. I'm going to talk about, number one, under former business, the agreement between Dauphin County and the National Rifle Association. And we're going to talk about it because I went back through old minutes and recordings, and last year, in January, there was a very... There was an agenda item which appeared almost exactly the same as this one. And a couple of weeks ago, when raised an issue about it, I appreciated that Commissioner Priest explained that this is the National Rifle Association paying our employees to do this work, folks who work for us, as Commissioner Hartwick mentioned, talking about the particular employees who might be used for that. And this is an important issue because when you read this, you, that's not the idea that you get. It sounds like we, Dauphin County, and the taxpayers are paying to provide security for that. So, I was confused last year too, as were several other people, when I looked at comments. And today, just before this meeting started, a friend of mine who was looking over the agenda said, "Why are the taxpayers of Dauphin County paying to provide security at the Great American Outdoor Show?" And I said to this person, "Oh, no, no, that, you misunderstand. That's not what is actually happening." So, I think as this agenda is put together, and I'm going to kind of look at you, Mr. Haggerty, it is important to make sure that what people are reading is exactly the way it sounds. And again, I appreciate both of you for pointing out what this actually meant and who would actually be involved in doing that. Thank you very much.
Ms. Parson, I think that's something we could take under advisement and consider as I'm reading it. It certainly doesn't state with clarity that the payment is from the NRA to the county. Thank you for that. Next up, we have Tom Connolly.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Tom Connolly, 345 North Harrisburg Street, Swatara Township. Appreciate the comment. Commissioner Priest may. No parking issues up and in and out of the campaign office. Mr. Backman, the staff are doing a great job answering questions and helping people there. I'm going to go back to a previous concern I had that the three commissioners play a role in as the election board, raised a concern about a PAC originally not following the rules, and then brought it here. As the election went on, concerns were raised about multiple PACs, Dauphin County Republican PAC, the Swatara Township Republican Committee Leadership PAC, and the Tucky and Zubek PACs. The math doesn't add up. It's on your page. You can look it up. It's on a public page, the election page. So, I appreciate the fact that Director Backman asked you guys to make a decision, which you did. You said you would go to the District Attorney. Originally, on the one issue, I had a memo that day. I came in and spoke that day, raised other issues, also wrote a letter, and a candidate in the Republican primary also formally requested a letter. So, you have quite a few concerns about the situation. Since that time, I raised the concern. I haven't been interviewed. You gave it to the Dauphin County District Attorney, Franchardo, going through the paperwork online. The same person that handles his finances handles the finances for some of these PACs. What hasn't happened is an election board meeting, an election's coming up. What hasn't happened is explaining how one PAC or one party, the Democratic Party, was fined. So, fines are issued. Fines weren't issued in this case. Reports weren't put on. We'll say they added, those two candidates added a pre-election, but they still haven't turned in a pre-primary, which would make them ineligible to be on the ballot, yet they stayed on the ballot. It would make them ineligible to take their seat by law. So, it kind of makes the election pointless. But I will say what has happened since that time, and unfortunately, I see we have, just returning Charter here, we see a $25,000 contribution on September 16th, a $30,000 contribution on September 29th, a $25,000 contribution, bringing $106,000 to the over $450,000 in the Republican, Dauphin County Republican Committee account. Those amounts I mentioned were donated by PACs connected to District Attorney Charter. So, he's pumped in well over $100,000 into this, using the person that raised questions. If everything is legitimate on the three PACs, that means the other two didn't tell the truth. They're reporting, receiving money from the PAC on a date that the PAC didn't send any money. So, there's issues all over the board. It should have been resolved. Maybe you could get to the bottom of it today with the District Attorney in the room, and he can give us that report in advance of the election. Thank you.
I would not ordinarily do this, as public comment portions are generally, you know, an opportunity for us to listen instead of engaging in a back and forth.
Are you talking to me?
Yeah. Yep. Three minutes is up. You don't have to be up there. You know, I'm really never bothered anytime, you know, residents speak their mind on a topic of interest to them, but I do feel the obligation to correct the record. You know, you've been here a few times now, and you've said things like, "The election is pointless," and you've called into question whether or not we have free and fair elections. I'm extremely defensive of the 1,500 people that work here, all of whom get paid about half of what they deserve. We have one of the absolute best election departments in the state, and I know that, not just because I work with them now, but because for six years in the governor's office, I had the opportunity to observe all 67 election departments across our Commonwealth. And you are not just an ordinary resident participating in public comment. I mean, you're an elected official. And I really take that personally when an election official, an elected official comes here and calls into question whether there's a point to our elections or whether we have free and fair elections. You know, there are people from both parties on our board. There are people in both parties in my office. There are people from both parties in our Elections Department, and every one of them busts their asses every day to try to protect our constitutional rights and make sure everyone has the opportunity to vote. So, I can tell you from one Democrat to another that we have free and fair elections here, and if you have concerns, you are always welcome to file a complaint with the Pennsylvania Department of State, which is the appropriate authority to do so. So, when people lie about whether elections have a point or whether they're free and fair, it's not just wrong. It's bad for our democracy, and it's wrong, whether it's the President of the United States who says it or a Swatara Township Commissioner. So, I would respectfully ask you, please be mindful of the things that you say as an elected official and what they mean for our democracy.
Thank you. I'll respond. I'll take the same amount of time to respond to you.
Your three minutes is up.
No, no. You address me afterwards. Do the right thing for all of those people. Both parties have complained. It was a very simple matter to investigate, and I didn't-
And I can assure you-
I didn't recommend to go to the District Attorney. These three did.
I can assure you that all of our staff have handled everything appropriately and by the books. Who is next for public comment?
My opinion doesn't pertain to the party that I'm in. The report should be filed when-
All right, I'm going to ask for order. Mr. Connolly, thank you for your comments.
I was leaving, and then I asked if he was-
I understand. Thank you for your comments. We're going to move on. Three minutes has been up. Thank you. DA Charter, you have public comment?
I just have a comment that I received the memorandum, and there was no allegation of a crime. It was a violation, alleged violation of the 24-hour after the mandatory filing of reports. In the statute, there is no crime in that, so I don't have jurisdiction over that. And so, there's nothing I could do. I thought about sending it to the Office of Attorney General. They'd say, "There's no crime alleged in the statute. There's nothing for us to do, nor was there anything for you to do." So, that's why I took no action on that, nor would I today. I read the statute, and there is no crime under that provision, so there's really nothing I could have done. It was just referred to me so I would know about it in case there was further actions that rose to full of crime.
Thank you, DA.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners. Ralph Rodriguez, Harrisburg, PA. In unfortunate circumstances of our SNAP benefits, not only statewide, but unfortunately nationally, we wanted to do something about it. Of course, we know this is tough times coming amongst us. I remember as a child spending coupons that my mom would give me at that time. It was just a paper certificate, and I didn't understand the significance of how that was actually feeding our families. Now, as a grown man, being able to, you know, take care of five kids, I don't take lightly, and I do understand there are millions of families that are looking towards doom over this weekend and moving forward. So, we wanted to do something, and when I say "we," that's as an elected official, as the Harrisburg City Councilman, Chair of Public Works. So, we'll be starting a dinner distribution the first Friday of every month until we get further notice of perhaps some changes or them actually being able to fund the SNAP benefits as they once did. But it will start November 7th from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Harrisburg Public Works Building, 1820 Paxton Street, right here in Harrisburg. Any family that would like to participate, all they would have to do is come by and show their actual SNAP card with their ID, and we will load their cars up with hot meals for them and their families. Of course, we know the need will be significant, and they'll be much more needed, but the little bit that we can play a part in to offer some assistance, we're willing to do that. So, it will be the first Friday of every month, starting 11:07 from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Harrisburg Public Works Building, 1820 Paxton Street, Harrisburg, PA 17104. This is in partnership with Crawdaddies and Uncle Dre's Cafe, and of course, the Harrisburg Public Works. So, thank you, Commissioners. If you wanted to stop by and help, you know, serve some dinners, we're doing a write-off of a hot buffet line right there at the Public Works Building and loading the cars up. But we do understand how the need is essential, and, you know, hunger is something that I know we all take serious, but we just want to do all we can. So, you know, you're all welcome, Mr. Haggerty, whoever would like to assist, any resident or business owner behind me. The more hands, the more we could feed. Anyone that's hearing this message as they watch, as it's live-streamed, you know, anything can go a long way. I've received calls all morning congratulating. Thank you. But it's really not for me to be thanked. I feel like I owe it's my duty to do so. So, if you could just drop off waters, if you could just drop off clamshell containers, whatever anyone can do to play their part, it goes a long way. So, once again, the first Friday of every month, we will be distributing hot meals to those in need. All they would have to do is show their access or EBT card with their ID, and we'll be starting this coming Friday on the 7th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Public Works Building. Thank you.
I just want to-
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yeah, as one Commissioner, I just want to say thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, you are the textbook definition of talking the talk and walking the walk. It's what you do on a daily basis. The kids, you help the community, the residency underserved population. You're always there, so thank you for taking the lead here.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Butts, Lewis Butts, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. We're in a situation now, federal, state, county-wise, where our funds are being denied. Now, we should learn through the pandemic, as well as this situation now, what we need to do to take states to bring revenue to our city. And if we had enough revenue that was coming in, we could treat our people as though they ought to be treated. So, we have to bring in superstructures as well as infrastructure to build those jobs, to create that revenue. Now, if we're not looking at creating revenue throughout the leaders to do things like this, substantiate our people and make sure they're healthy and safe, then we're not doing our job from the things that we've learned from the past. This is going to come again. We have to prepare ourselves, and we have to prepare our city and our county to support these issues and these experience that we're going through. Now, downtown needs to make money. Our revenue, we need to make revenue. There was a lady last week who came in and said she was having trouble, and she didn't want her child to go to Harrisburg School District. Harrisburg is number one in the state, and we should make sure, for football, and we should make sure that people know that Harrisburg is not the worst school in the state. But they need help. Teachers need help, and the Harrisburg International Aquarium that I proposed would help our education system as well as bring in the revenue that we need to help our community. Creating revenue should be everyone's, on everyone's top focus. All this other stuff is null and void if we have good, strong veins of revenue. The Harrisburg International Aquarium is good revenue. You can look at the numbers that aquariums bring to their community as well as their state. The hydro power is revenue as well as an energy grid. These things, the river is endless. It's one of the oldest rivers in the world. It was before the mountains. If we don't harness and empower our stuff that we have right here, we will fall back further and further, especially when events like this happens. If we don't get in front of the eight ball, we'll always be behind the eight ball. And us as reasonable men from our forefathers had set things up for us to do, like our bridges were toll bridges that were built as toll bridges. If we don't use the infrastructure our forefathers had set up for us, then we'll always be raving and grappling for the federal government to assist us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butts. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Call in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.